Looks like we have all council members present. So we have reconvened after executive session in our 7:00 PM shout out to our frontline workers. I once again want to thank all those that are working so hard to service during the pandemic and in the continuing tradition of shouting out to unsung heroes. I want to recognize our tri-town cares committee, a group of volunteers, including clergy, mental health professionals, elected officials from Madison and the Chatham's. This group has been meeting weekly to address the need for mental health support and now discussing issues around social and racial injustice. I want to thank all the members of this committee on behalf, working so hard on behalf of our three communities and we'll be talking more about their work and on the regular agenda. Council President Vitale, you want to share your shout out?
You're muted.
Carmella, you're muted.
Okay.
There we go, now we can.
Okay, so now I'll start all over again and say what I want to talk about tonight is why the 2020 census is critical to Madison's future. New Jersey was undercounted in 2010, last census. The final count in New Jersey in 2010 was 67.6%. Morris County's count was 75.4%. Madison was 77.1%. That means almost 25% of Madison's population was not counted and as a result was not taken into consideration in our planning needs in the past 10 years, probably more. This accurate data is absolutely essential for us to plan what our needs are, to make sure that we have vital public and mental health services, and the list goes on and on, right down to master planning and the number of congressional seats, you name it. There's a lot of reasons that we need this accurate data. Keep in mind that not only Madison's services and programs are provided by municipalities, many are provided on a county level and others come from the state. Funding nationwide comes in large part from Washington in 2017 to the tune of 675 billion, 22.7 billion to New Jersey in 2016. So there's a lot at stake right now. As of Thursday, 6:18, Madison's response was 74.2%. Morris County is 72.8%. New Jersey is 63.4%. Most people who are willing to voluntarily participate in the census have done so. What we need to do now through Halloween is to work together, get at that count of that remaining hard to reach 25%. So how do we do? First, we continue to vigorously support the efforts in New Jersey Census 2020, both virtually and on the ground as the governor and public health guidance permits. Some examples of local organizations that have been active supporters at Tri-Count 55 Team of Laura Saw Stat, John Hoover, and Tom Honahan, and Tony Van Oer at the Madison Housing Authority. So there's been quite a challenge since COVID hit, but there's a lot, there's really a lot of stuff that can be done that maybe what we need is if you belong to a nonprofit or a church group that's willing to help, we'd like for you to get in touch with us. A lot of this information I'm not going to talk about right now because it talks about participation by the Health Department, the library, nonprofits, clergy, and whatever, but we can use your help. I've asked permission for this, all of this information to be posted on RoseNet and we hope that, you know, you can help us get that up to that 100% and help us get those 25% counted. We're the number one best place to live in that, in New Jersey, and I think we should be 100%. And it only takes a little bit of an effort. We will be making a recommendation to the clerk's office, which we have already done, and she will have census information available to help anybody at this point. So look on RoseNet under the 2020 census and how critical it is to Madison's future and see if you can help us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your shout out for all those making sure we all get counted. And Astri.
Thank you, Mayor. Now that downtown is slowly opening, I want to give a shout out to all those people who wore their masks, who observed social distancing at the outdoor dining, and I want to thank the restaurant owners also for making sure that people did what they were supposed to do. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Maureen.
Thank you, Mayor. Over and over, we're seeing our youngest citizens stepping up to support their community. On Friday, I was privileged to be with one of these groups. For many, Girl Scouts and cookies are indelibly linked. Everyone has their favorite, but I don't know anyone who would turn on and buy one. The Madison Harding Girl Scouts sell to friends and families and also order cookies to be sold outside of public spaces like Walgreens and Stop &amp; Shop. COVID-19 brought social distancing it and with it, a lot of excess cookies that would be sold to the public. The Girl Scouts remember that the Rotary Club of Madison worked to end hunger. Did they know anyone who could use the cookies? And so with the generous support of Rotarians and other community members, the excess cookies were distributed to area food pantries and food distribution efforts like the Box Care Program for Madison students and the Madison First Baptist Church Food Pantry. On Friday, we gathered with the mayor at Hartley Dodge Memorial to celebrate the Girl Scouts for their efforts. Never underestimate the power of a woman. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And John Hoover.
How do I follow that? Or the power of a man. I'd like to give, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give a shout out to the Madison Community Pool. Our pool is open and just in time for this very hot spell. Madison is one of the very few municipalities that have opened, but it wasn't easy. I'd like to thank the pool board and its chair, Ed Nun, for their tireless energy and commitment. Thank you also to the Health Department for completing all of the required inspections during this very busy and hectic time for them. Mostly, I'd like to recognize and thank the many volunteers who helped make this a reality. So please enjoy the pool. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And Deb Cohen.
There we go. All right. Tonight, I would like to do my shout out to all the students and kids, from the smallest of toddlers to our recent high school graduates. In the middle of March, their world was turned upside down, whether that meant no playdates, no preschool, moving to e-learning to continue going to school, loss of traditions and activities. Spring activities, both rec and schools were canceled, as well as dance or theater and so much more. Our children stepped up to the plate and made it work. They might have driven us crazy at times as well and gotten a little too much screen time, but they persevered and finished up this unusual year. Now we head into summer with a little bit more open, but still restrictions. So kudos to our kids for doing their best in an unusual situation that no one could have predicted.
Thank you. And Rachel Erland.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a shout out to the Concerned Residents Group or neighbors of the Woodland area that gathered on a Zoom call last week, and I was privileged to join this meeting to talk about street safety for pedestrians, especially for kids who, the same kids that Deb just shouted out, find themselves riding bikes, skateboards, walking in the street, and generally being more out and about and unfortunately perhaps more exposed to traffic safety concerns. And so I want to thank those residents for allowing me to participate in that call along with Lieutenant Longo. And I especially want to thank Lieutenant Longo and the Madison Police Department for responding by setting up a series of speed tests, rather, speed, I don't want to call them traps, but there was some good enforcement over the week. I think there's talk of great new signs that are going to be installed, including on neighbors' lawns, and I just want to commend those residents for getting together to make change in their neighborhood where they felt like they can make a difference to improve street safety. So thank you to all of you, including me, and for persisting in your efforts to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety on Woodland.
Thank you for our shout outs and in honor of all our heroes and our country, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right before we go on to the minutes, I do want to take a moment of silence for James Raymond Prisco, senior lifelong Madison resident, died peacefully at his home on Thursday, June 11th. He was 99. Jim was born April 28th, 1921, in Madison, the youngest of eight children to Carmen and Carmela Prisco. In 1941, he married Mary Tyrone and enjoyed 67 years of marriage. They were blessed with two children, James Junior and Donna. He worked in his spare time collecting supplies and equipment and moved into the home he had built just four months after digging the cellar. That same year, he started his own construction company in Summit in 1949. He formed JR Prisco Incorporated, which is still a successful general contractor in business today, run by his, by Jim Junior, his son, and two of Jim Junior's sons, Stephen and Philip, and they were instrumental on both the community house and the rebuilding of St. Vincent's. He was, gave his time and labor to St. Vincent Martyr Church, starting in 1950s. He was instrumental in designing and building a new mausoleum at the cemetery, and he worked tirelessly in many years on many nonprofit boards as a trustee. He also constructed many special buildings for special clients and extended through the generation of Prisco workers, included the parish center Corpus Christi in Chatham. And his son Jim Junior oversaw the rebuilding of their church in the 80s, and the third generation is now working also on that church. Jim will be remembered for the love for his family and friends, his endurance and discipline nature, his generous heart, impeccable worth ethic, and faithfulness and service to the Roman Catholic Church. He was predeceased by his beloved wife of 67 years, survived by his son Jim Junior and his daughter Donna of Delray Beach, three grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, many loving nieces and nephews, and of course, many dear friends. Let's take a moment to remember Jim Prisco and his family and relatives that he has left behind. Thank you. And I have a motion for the minutes of, the executive minutes of May 27th, 2020.
Don't move, Mayor.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion for the regular minutes of May 27th, 2020.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome everyone. It's very clear that summer has arrived, nice and warm out there. So a couple of follow-ups or shout-outs and a few other things to share. There's a, we have our first meeting of summer officially, since I arrived on Saturday. I mentioned in my shout out, the tri-town cares mental health committee, one of the initiatives that we're working on is conducting a survey on how residents are coping with the stresses of the pandemic. And so we'd love to get your input, that would not only help us manage or getting through the pandemic, but will help us in the future and also understand what the impact of the pandemic was on the mental lives. So if you can, please go to www.surveymonkey.com/r, that's a letter R, tri-town, that's T-R-I- dash town cares survey. So tri-town care survey with the dash between the tri and the town, all one word, and fill out the survey. You can also find links on our tri-towncares.org site. And Carmella mentioned the importance of the sentence in her shout out, and Chatham Township Mayor Kelly made the same, the following challenge to Chatham Township. Right now, the rate for Chatham stands at 78.3%. That's better than nearby Madison at 74 and far better than the statewide at 63 and national at 61. But the Chatham's are lagging behind other nearby towns like New Providence and Berkeley Heights. So my challenge to Madison, of course, we are number one best place to be, so we should be number one in getting counted. So let's make sure you go out and complete the census. This past Monday, we, our restaurants launched outdoor dining and July 2nd, indoor dining can resume at 25% capacity. Our Director of Business Development, Lisa Ellis, has been working closely with our businesses so they can maximize the space allowance while keeping their patrons safe. And it was great to see the expanded outdoor dining options and so many tables filled with customers and the great food. So outside, and outside the showers on Saturday, I think it was a great opening week. So thanks for all those that got out to enjoy a great meal. And today, salons and personal care businesses were able to open. I'm not too sure where the polling stands on the curls in the back of my hair right now, but if you, if you do like them, I'm sorry to say that tomorrow at 11:20, which is my appointment, you have to call ahead, because walk-in business is not allowed, the curls will be going away, and the longest hair I've had since my early twenties will be a thing of history. And also today was a return of non-contact sports. We saw activities at Dodge Field, and in honor of that, I'm wearing my special tie with all sorts of sports equipment on there, so great to see people getting out again. And as John mentioned, his shout out, today was the opening day for Madison Community Pool. First day was allowed by the state, and John already mentioned that so many, many pools have not opened yet and some may not open at all. So the leadership at our pool is to be commended for getting ready. And they reviewed it with me on Saturday, and I can tell you, not only are they meeting the COVID-19 pool guidelines, they're going beyond it to make sure our families are safe. And if you check out Facebook, you will see my first plunge into the pool, which I did today at 12 o'clock, and it was great to feel that water on a hot day. Scores are still coming in on my style points on my entry, and right now they range from 9.5 from myself to a 2 from my wife, but so it's, so anyway, with that, let's get to reports from committees. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report from the clerk's office by Executive Order 144. Election Day is July 7th. Vote by mail election members, members of both Republican and Democratic Parties have been mailed vote by mail ballots. All ballots are postage paid or can be dropped off in a drop box behind the Public Safety Complex at 62 Kings Road. One polling location for ADA voters only or for provisional ballots will be, will be open. If you have any questions, you can call the clerk's office and she'll be able to tell you where that polling place is as well. From Finance, from the Tax Collector's Office, at our last meeting, council passed an important resolution to establish a rate so that we can issue estimated property tax bills for the third quarter. Those bills will be mailed out next week. It is important to notice that you only get mailed, you only get a bill for the third quarter. A bill for the remaining three quarters will be mailed out later in the summer after the state and county certify the tax rate. Please contact Chrissy or Hattie in the Tax Collector's Office if you have any questions. From the CFO, the draft audit has been completed and the Audit Committee is scheduled to meet via Zoom on Thursday afternoon. I'm happy to report that the audit is in good shape. We expect the final version to be issued later in the summer. I want to thank the Audit Committee members for their time and dedication because this will be a long two-hour meeting. Utility Billing Department have two items to report here. First, this evening, we're going to have a very short presentation from CFO on the new online utility bill pay platform. Residents and businesses are encouraged to go to RoseNet and sign up for Invoice Cloud. The service you can select is paperless bills, automatic bill pay, paid by text, schedule of reoccurring payment. Please note that the pay by electronic check is free and there is a fee if you pay by credit card. Second item for utility billing is about a rebate program. Back on March, on March 30th, the mayor presented the COVID-19 crisis response toolkit. As part of this, the council approved giving a targeted $400 rebate on the electric bill to small businesses that were impacted by the global pandemic. The council also approved the $200 targeted rebate on the electric bill for residents that were furloughed or lost their jobs as a result of the pandemic. The application deadline for both of these programs is next Monday. As of this morning, over 150 small businesses and over 320 Madison residents have applied for the rebate. Utility billing will be processing these rebates over the coming weeks and recipients will see a credit on their bill titled COVID-19 rebate. Since 2012, the governing body has intentionally maintained strong surplus balances to protect the borough from a significant financial event. The pandemic has really hurt a lot of residents and businesses. I'm happy that the council acted so quickly back in March, and I'm happy that we're able to offer this small bit of relief to those in need. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, on Saturday, June 13th, the Police Department assisted with a peaceful demonstration from the Madison High School to the Florham Park Municipal Complex, which was led and organized by Black Lives Matter. This event was attended by hundreds of citizens who voiced their concerns and who assembled in a very professional and a peaceful manner. Madison Police worked closely with the surrounding agencies to ensure a safe environment for all those who attended the event. And as with previous demonstrations, Chief Dactysin would like to personally thank all who attended and exercised their constitutional rights in a peaceful and respectful manner. And then again, from the Police Department, during several weeks in May, several Madison residents were victim to their Amazon packages being stolen from the front of the residence. Detective Ken Shannon, after an investigation, arrested Terry Nadler for stealing these packages from the front stoops of our residence, and he is now awaiting his court appearance in Morris County Superior Court. I'd also like to congratulate our three police officers being appointed tonight with, because of the retirement of three officers we have hired at the best from the Morris County Police Academy, and we welcome them to Madison. From the Fire Department, at 1:25 PM on Saturday, June 20th, the Fire Department responded to a smoke condition at the Central Avenue Laundromat, and it was due to burning towels and rags in one of their large commercial dryers. The fire was quickly extinguished and fans were used to remove the smoke, but the building was not compromised. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, I mean, Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Department of Public Works, the Mechanics Department continues to service vehicles and equipment, installed new computer mounts in the new police vehicles. In terms of parks, they've been maintaining the park and ball field, so they're in prime position for the non-contact works to come back. For the Sewer Department, they've replaced the basin heads and grates to comply with stormwater regulations and bicycle safety on the roads that have, are using mill and overlay scheduled programs. This requires the removal of joints and corroded bolts and replacing the bolts, heads, and joints. They're also cleaning and repairing basins on roads for mill and overlay and then completing the manhole replacement to reduce inflow and infiltration. And then from the, from the engineering report, Midwest Construction commenced drainage improvements on Glen Wild on June 8th, anticipating both curb and drainage work will advance next week. Storm sewers on Albright and Beverly will be constructed by Midwest by week of July 7th. In a pre-construction meeting with Savelli and Sons was held on June 18th, the contractor plans to mobilize on or about July 7th. Water AC Schultz has been retained to address a 16-year-old electric motor at Well D, which has developed a lot of problems and needs replacing. They also needed to do coping, flashing, and repainting work at the treatment facility to roof leaks around the tower. Design drawings for Well B rehabilitation are underway. Madison water quality lab samples related to new regulated contamination PFOA are below the action levels required by the NJDEP. This is very good news. An EPA format risk assessment is being completed to respond to water accountability compliance tests due later this year. And then finally, the Madison Environmental Commission is holding a webinar on Echo, an Echo tip webinar on Thursday, this Thursday at 7:00 PM. People will be coming on and discussing ways we can be more environmentally friendly in our home and our neighborhoods. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the seniors, the senior shopping network has slowed somewhat after its initial huge volume of shoppers, but you can still participate if it still exists. You can dial 800-337-0236 or email madisonseñors2020@gmail.com. The Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, Senior Center, Madison Seniors 2020, Tri-Town Cares and the YMCA are all working to identify seniors who are in need of services now and thinking about what happens next as the vulnerable senior population remains at risk for the foreseeable future. Survey and phone interviews are ongoing with the plan to get the information together to make best use of it all. There's about three surveys out there right now as I know it. As we continue to understand needs, we can make best use of the many volunteers who have stepped up to help, including the Madisonians and Seton Hall Prep. From the Director of Downtown Business Development, at the DDC meeting on Thursday, June 18th, the DDC voted to cancel Bottle Hill Day for 2020 due to the uncertainties stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic. Instead, they will explore some type of smaller scale Madison-centric, Madison-centric event, providing the state guidelines will allow it. Downtown Concert Series will go on this summer following social distancing and masking requirements. The first concert is set for Friday, July 10th. The concerts are held at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts on Greenville Street. Guests will be asked to bring their own chairs. The Madison Farmers Market is open every Thursday through November 19th. The market is located at Dodge Field. The hours will remain the same, 2 to 7:00 PM. Customer health and safety guidelines are posted at the entrance. Restaurant, we do hand out, we do spray and hand out masks as well. Restaurants open for outdoor dining on Monday, June 15th, and hopefully indoor dining on June 22nd. Please check with your favorite places before dining, reservations may be required. As of today, June 22nd, personal, excuse me, I said, I meant July 7th is when they'll have indoor dining. As of today, June 22nd, personal care businesses may reopen. This includes cosmetology shops, barber shops, beauty salons, hair braiding shops, nail salons, electro, electro, excuse me, electrology facilities, spas, including day spas and medical spas at which solely elective and cosmetic medical procedures are performed, massage parlors, tanning salons, and tattoo parlors. They are subject to detailed health and safety protocols. Please make appointments ahead and check the requirements before going. The Madison Community Arts Center, drive-in concerts are being planned for the week end of July 25th at the Madison Recreation Complex for the first site. They're working in conjunction with the Folk Project. From the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the major part of the mold remediation is complete, and we're mixed steps of restoring the affected spaces underway. On Wednesday, a virtual site meeting will be conducted with the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust as part of the formal review process for the grant to continue the main level interior conservation project. Last week, the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts was notified that they are a recent recipient, $5,000 COVID-19 response grant from the New Jersey Council for the Humanities. These grants were awarded to cultural organizations. These grants were awarded to cultural organizations around the state to assist them with the important body of work they do in New Jersey and to support these nonprofits who are facing economic difficulties during the COVID-19 crisis. The museum remains closed to the public, awaiting the approval to reopen from the governor, along with the other museums and libraries around the state. However, a robust online presence continues and the needs of our students, seniors and other audiences through technology are being met. Recreation Advisory Committee, the Recreation Advisory Committee is working together to ensure that all Madison families have a consistent experience regardless of which youth sports program they may participate in this summer. Softball currently has 130 residents registrations for summer programs. From the Recreation Department, in accordance with the Governor's executive order, youth sports officially resume on June 22nd. We have been working, that's today, we have been working in close cooperation with our programs to ensure a smooth transition back to the playing fields. As it now stands, Juniors' Girls' Softball, Madison Soccer Club, Madison Little League are all set to begin non-concept drills and practices. In order to assist our programs in complying with the rigorous guidelines established by the New Jersey Department of Health, we purchased $3,200 worth of masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes and infrared thermometers from the Madison Pharmacy and distributed each, each of the four, three, four mentioned groups. I'd like to thank Frank Iannarone and the pharmacy for providing all of this PPE at cost. In addition to our own primary sports organizations, we will also be hosting several local fitness businesses for outdoor exercise classes in accordance with the recently passed resolution. We will also be renting space to several Madison-based sports organizations. And we will host the Madison YMCA at Lucy D and the Bailey Ellerfield for their summer camps and additional youth program. Because of the loss of the spring season, there is extreme summer demand for field space. Furthermore, space in town is very limited right now as we await word from the Board of Education as to their timeline for reopening their fields. We greatly appreciate everyone's patience and flexibility as we try to meet everyone's needs. And finally, we have created a separate page on the Recreation Department section of Rosnet devoted to entirely to COVID-19 information related to sports. Here you can find in the New Jersey Department of Health Guidelines and other helpful resources. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor, thank you. Yep, and health, Ms. Cohen.
Okay, before I get to health, just real quick, I got an update from the community pool that they had a great first day, they had a pretty good morning session, great afternoon numbers. And then as a 4:15, when I heard from Edna, there were still plenty of people coming in. They closed in between each session for cleaning and there were no complaints, people left and then came back. Membership is still available, so please make sure if you're interested, lots of different membership options. And they greatly appreciate the continued support of the borough to provide the premier family fund facility in the area. Our staff is done and continues to do a great job, we couldn't have done this without them. The Health Department report, I'm going to edit as I go because a lot of this has been covered once or twice already. The trends locally and in the northern part of the state continue to show improvement. New hospitalizations, patients in the ICU and those requiring use of ventilator have all continued to decline. This is good news, but please remember, we are still early in our stage two of opening. As of today, Madison reports 146 total cases of COVID-19 with just 11 new cases since June 1st. After conclusion of contact tracing investigations and follow-up, only eight of the 144 cases, 146 cases remain open and are still being monitored by the Health Department. Like I said, I'm just trying to skip over a couple of things. It has been wonderful to see a little more activity in our downtown with the outdoor dining and retail operations, even if that activity includes more masks and social distancing. I think it's been said, but effective immediately, outdoor gatherings have a new increased limit of 250 people with no limit on political or religious activities. Indoor gatherings can now be held at 25% of approved occupancy but cannot exceed 100 persons. As of July 2nd, indoor dining may resume at 25% capacity and there should be full guidance on that coming shortly. All of these reopenings come with their own set of restrictions and guidelines to ensure we minimize the potential for spreading COVID-19. Obviously, the dates mentioned indicate when an opening can occur. Please check with specific retailers, food establishment, camp, et cetera, for their specific reopening date. Turning to testing, of course, get a test if you're experiencing symptoms or if you've been in a situation where you have been exposed such as at a larger gathering or if you just want to test, that you should consider getting one. Testing capacity is not an issue in Madison. Hang on one second. Hey. Yeah, I know, but I'm not on you. Testing capacity, sorry, is not an issue in Madison or the greater Morris County area between local independent medical practices, urgent care centers and larger health groups like Atlantic Health and Summit Medical Group. There are many places to receive a free or low-cost test. The Morris County Testing Center at CCM no longer requires a prescription, but please be aware, they are closing this Friday, June 26th. As we continue reopening and expanding our circles, some final remember, some final reminders. But here's an abridged version, when you are away from home, practice social distancing as much as practical. When inside businesses or other required locations wear a face covering that covers both the nose and mouth. Place used gloves and disposable masks in the trash when you receive them and remove them. Wash your hands or use hand sanitizer, refrain from touching your face. Get exercise outdoors, but take proper precautions when in public areas. And finally, parents, continue to communicate with your children about how they can protect themselves as they interact with friends or others outside your household. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb, and thank you for reinforcing your shout-out on the stresses of working from home and doing all studying. And with that, utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
I also just had to stop a tantrum going on upstairs because I don't need you all to hear Julian melting down. Sorry about that. So for utilities, the electric department is still working in two crews in separate locations, which are still working out well. Over this past weekend, there were two no-power calls, one at Madison Plaza, one at Loveland Street. The standby crews were called out in each case and power was restored within an hour. Secondary cable upgrade and improvements have taken place on Sarah Court and been completed. And the department is now working on upgrading the same on Holden Lane. These upgrades, upgrades are an important element of maintaining our electrical system. In addition, new utility poles were set and equipment was transferred on West Street, Gibbons Place and Holden Lane. To maintain the reliability of our electric service, the department is self-performing tree trimming and line clearance this year. This is a new initiative by the electric utility staff to provide tree trimming after regular department hours at a lower cost and on a more efficient schedule than hiring a third-party contractor. The line clearance assessments have been completed and the work commenced this afternoon. I did see some trucks driving through town with some tree limbs, so the work has begun. From the Water Department, the department has repaired a leak on a water service line to a newly renovated house. Interestingly, the leak was located using the department's electronic listening device. The valve maintenance and locating program is ongoing. During this operation, so far 11 valves have been, that have been paved over, were dug up, repaired and brought up to meet the grade of the road and operated. That's all for utilities this week.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor, council received a letter dated June the 15th from resident Michael Piano of Lathrop Avenue regarding the protests at Borough Hall.
Thank you. And now we move on to invitations for discussion. This is the first of two that we offer. This one is limited to the items on our agenda discussion and also the resolutions are listed. So let me go through the rules on this in case you want to comment on any of our agenda items or the resolutions. Later on in the meeting, we will have the open comment period when you may comment on any topic. So you're open this section to questions and comments on any discussion items on the agenda or resolutions. There'll be, as I mentioned, another one later in the meeting, you comment anything. If you are online, you can raise your hand by clicking on the hand. If you're on the computer, but if you're on your phone, you can be recognized by hitting star nine. And note that for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or a call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized and unmuted, you must first state your name and address before starting any comments. Failure to do so, do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. You have three minutes to try to commit, finish your comments, but we will give you a one-minute grace period and you will be stopped at four minutes. And if you have questions, we will capture those questions and then answer them either during our discussions or immediately following. We won't answer them during your time, so we can give you your most, most possible time. And these are the items you may comment on. We will be talking about the resident ID program, which is a municipal ID program. We'll be talking about racial injustice conversations in a town hall process. Also, online billing system. And these are the following resolutions that will be part of the consent agenda. So when we get to it, you'll know these are on there or you may comment them in a section. So it's Resolution 165, 168 is awarding professional services contract to J.A. Mahalik, architect for architectural plans and specifications for well B improvements not to exceed 12,750. And that will be funded through engineering professional services line in the operation budget or another one deemed appropriate by the CFO. 169, Resolution with Borough Madison authorizing membership in the 2020, 2021 Employee Wellness Program through the Madison Area YMCA. Resolution 170, Resolution Borough Madison setting salaries for our full-time, non-union personnel. This is an annual adjustment. Resolution 171 is ratifying salary increase to confidential employees excluded from union participation. Again, and then annual action. Resolution 172 is authorizing release performance bond for Harding Homes doing business as La Savita for the premises known as Lewanica Terrace. And this is a release of a $20,000 performance bond. Resolution 173 is authorizing final change order and payment to Sefeli and Sons General Contracting for the amount of $202,635. And this is funded through ordinance 18-2018. Resolution 174 is approving a distribution from the Jacob Henry's Perkins Trust for $134. And Resolution 175 is requesting the Director of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget for 2020. This is to reflect a grant on Body Armor Replacement Fund of $3,000. Resolution 176 is canceling completed capital improvement ordinances, which include the body cameras and body armor of $3,300 and also the refunding bond ordinance, which is $2.9 million. Resolution 177, awarding professional service contract to McDonald of Islam for professional engineering services for well B not to exceed $12,000. And this is funded through ordinance 18-2018. Resolution 178 is authorizing $350 NJ DOT Municipal Aid Application for Green Avenue North, which is Woodland to King's Road. And Resolution 179 is a Raffel License Application submitted by the Thursday Morning Club. Resolution 180 is amending Resolution 73 2020, which was awarding a cooperative contract to Shifano Construction Company for milling and paving improvements under the Morris County Co-op. And this is additional services not to exceed $30,000 funded through ordinance 2 2020. Resolution 181 is appointing Jonathan Frono Shario to the position of probationary police officer. Resolution 182 is appointing Kevin William McQuestion to a position of probationary police officer. And 183 is appointing Andrew Mara to a position of probationary police officer. Resolution 184 is awarding contract for purchase of electric meters and water modules from Byram Labs in the amounts of $15,122. Funds are coming from ordinances 36 2016 and 41 2019. And Resolution 185 is use of establishing rates for the use of the borough-owned electric vehicle charging stations that are being, have been installed and will be installed a little further. And that's dollar for the first, first two hours, third hour is $3 an hour. That's a dollar per hour first two and after four hours to encourage them to move on, it's $25 an hour. So those are the resolutions you may comment on or the three agenda items. If anyone wishes a comment, please click on Raise Your Hand or Star Nine. See, yep, two hands that say Michael Plessier. Nope, there, okay, we do have a couple coming up.
You're unmuted. Whoever has their hand up could speak now.
Oh, hi, this is Christine Preston calling, 54 Sampson Avenue. Hi, Mayor and Council, I wanted to talk about the agenda item of the municipal ID. And I just wanted to say how grateful I was to see that it was on the agenda tonight. I think this is a really terrific opportunity for the town to recognize a lot of people who often don't have the opportunity to have a government-issue ID or who have difficulty obtaining one. So for instance, like I think it's a really great opportunity for seniors who may no longer have a valid driver's license. They would have a form of ID or students who haven't yet gotten their driver's license but are walking around town. And it's really reassuring for parents to know that their children will have an actual ID on them. Also, just non-drivers in general. It's a good, it's a good for them. You know, disabled residents who can't drive now will be able to have a government ID if we install this program. And then, of course, it would also help the more vulnerable community members of our town like the homeless or the foster children or even the elderly or formerly incarcerated individuals or undocumented immigrants in our community would have an opportunity to obtain a government ID that they could use to, you know, open up a bank account or pick up their child at school. You know, that's something that's necessary now, you need to be able to show a government ID in order to do that and those sorts of things. So I just was incredibly happy to see that this was on the agenda and I think it's a big benefit to all people in town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Um, hello, my name is Claudia, I'm Sugar Mahia. And I'm going to be giving two statements today. One is my statement and the other is my grandmother who unfortunately, due to technological reasons and COVID concerns, couldn't be on the Zoom today. Good evening.
Claudia, if you could just state your address before moving forward.
34 Ridgedale Avenue, Madison. Um, I'm a ninth grader at Madison High School and I do have a school ID. This ID contains my name and my school's address. While this ID does make me a small, a part of a small community of neighbors, I will not have an ID that has my address until I get my driver's license. And for me, while that isn't a long time to wait as I'm only a ninth grader, for a bunch of other students, it's a lot longer to wait until they get their driver's license. Having a town ID makes me not only a part of the Madison community, but also gives me an ID with my address, which as you can imagine, is important for a number of reasons. I strongly support town IDs. And now we're going to go on to my grandmother's statement, which she gave me over the phone. Her name is Luz Marivarcas and she lives on 44 Cook Ave, Apartment 202. As a senior citizen living in the Madison housing, I am no longer driving and my driver's license will expire in 2022. I often get asked for an ID at the pharmacy, at the bank, making purchases with a check and any other time you can think of. Come 2022, when my driver's license expires, I will need some sort of ID. Having a town ID means that when my driver's license expires, I don't need to worry about how I'm going to get an ID. I need a town ID. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claudia. And next.
Jessica.
Yep, hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, Jessica DePaolo, I'm at 31 Alma Avenue. I'm also like to comment on the municipal ID ordinance and actually will echo many of the comments that Christine made earlier. I just think we're, right now, this is a perfect time and a great opportunity for Madison to continue to demonstrate that we really are a welcoming community and by that I mean ensuring that And by that, I mean ensuring that people who might not be able to access a government-issued ID are able to have identification that will give them access to a lot of things in the community. As was noted before, a lot of times, senior citizens or younger students who may not have a driver's license won't be able to have an identification, as well as other individuals who may be disabled or otherwise not have a driver's license. The ability to have an ID also broadens your ability to access a lot of the opportunities and resources and services in the community, such as libraries, schools, opening a bank account, getting into a gym, or other types of things like that. And then there's some even just real everyday advantages that we don't think about, such as taking advantages of programs, discount programs, and things like that at local stores and retail. So really, if we want to make sure that we are thinking about everybody equally and fully welcoming and allowing everybody in our community to have equal access, I think that this ID program is a wonderful idea, and I fully support it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alex Jennings?
Hi, yes, this is Alex Jennings. I live at Six Edgewood Road. I'm just calling in with just something quick, since I just want to say I support all of the points made by Christine Preston and Jessica DePaolo, and Claudia and her grandmother as well. I think the municipal ID is a great thing for all Madison residents, and I'm thrilled it was introduced tonight, and I look forward to the vote, which I believe will be on July 13th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's one more with a name, but you had your hand raised.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Paula Marquez. I live on the Drew Campus, 36 Madison Avenue. I'm a theological student at Drew University, about to enter my second year in the Masters in Divinity. And I'm excited about the ideas and how this will benefit the international students and make their life in Madison a lot easier. I'm happy that we are helping them to, for better transition and facilitate that these folks feel at home. This will make a lot of difference in regards to banking, driver licenses, and so many other things that are necessary to live at ease in any place. This will help us as a town to be more welcoming and open our arms to students who contribute and care deeply about Madison. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a Galaxy tab.
So your Galaxy tab, your name is not listed, so please make sure the first thing out of your mouth is name and address.
So this is Diana Mejia from Wind of the Spirit, and we are here in our community space at the Presbyterian Church in Madison. And here we are with some members of the Domestic Workers Committee and other members. And we, personally, I live in 34 Ridgedale Avenue, and we have members here who live in Main Street, Park Avenue, Alma Street, Greenwood Avenue, Lake of Avenue. So we have several members of the Madison Committee here, Wind of the Spirit, and we strongly support the idea of municipal ID. We applaud the town for the decision, finally. It's good that we're getting there. And definitely, so we hope that we can move forward to really be a welcoming town and be able to prepare not only the immigrant community, but others regarding with the municipal ID and how we all can work together and become a real community in building more, building a better community. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Diana.
There's one more here. Feel free, if you had your hand raised. Just need to unmute yourself. There you are.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Stuart Seidenstrucker, and I live at 34 Ridgedale Avenue. And apparently, we have 34 Ridgedale Avenue speaking from different places today. I very much appreciate the town bringing this to this point. I know we've been talking about this for some time. For me, it's important to be part of a community and feel part of a community, and for me, the town ID does just that. I can tell you that working as a volunteer with Wind of the Spirit on the census since January, but specifically in Madison, we could see how much easier it would have been to work had we had this ID being already in place, right? I mean, the census work, one of the challenges is to make sure people understand that this is a duty of everyone living in the country, but it's also a very important tool for the federal government to decide how to, how to put the money into different communities. And one challenge when you work in some communities is to make sure people feel good about the government and feel safe about the government. And the town ID would help us in that regard tremendously. I can definitely see that we have differences among our residents. We all think differently and have different perceptions, and that's great. But I think we can celebrate our differences with the idea that we all live in Madison, and therefore, we all can have a Madison ID. So I congratulate the town in doing such a, taking such an important step, and I'll be happy to support in any position I can to make this a success for our Madison community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the assistance on getting to this point. Looks like Steve Sherman?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Steve Sherman, I'm at 6 Myrtle Avenue. I just wanted to say, to continue to talk about the ID. One aspect of it that I think is very important is I have a, my father-in-law has declining health, has Alzheimer's. If they have an ID on them, they won't, you know, if they don't remember where they are, if they get lost, if they're driving somewhere, if they're walking somewhere and they're disoriented, there's a way of actually having something on them. If they don't have a driver's license or any other government ID, it is imperative that they have some sort of way of being identified, because they might not know where they are, who they are, because of that debilitating illness. So I think it's a, it's a really good idea to have some sort of ID that can identify who they are. That's just my quick comment. I think it's really important that this be done. Thanks.
Thank you for also bringing up another great reason to have this. Looks like we are finished, and so we'll close this part of the meeting, and we'll move on to the President ID. We're going to bring up the presentation, which at this point, I probably don't need to do, because a lot of it is in the comments, was covered. But, you know, just as we look at this opening slide, we are not alone on this program. There are, Morris Town and Dover in Morris County already have it. As you look at the opening slide here, I can recognize Mayor Darty on his ID for the sample from Town of Morris Town. And so it's been in place in multiple places, and that's what we used not only for ordinance, but also for implementation. We'll go on to the next slide on the whys of we're doing this. And a little more background, Ben Wolkowitz and I did meet with Wind of the Spirit several years ago, obviously, when Ben was still with us, and this was a high priority, and we got distracted multiple times, regretfully. And it has been reinforced as we enter this pandemic, and people are looking for resources and support and want to feel identity to a community, and it was made difficult. So you've heard some of the reasons from, some of the people have already commented that not everyone can get a county or state non-driver ID, more and more, and just to get in the door. Whether it's schools, you could have your child enrolled in a school, but you may not be able to go pick up your child if you don't have a government ID. The YMCA even requires people to enter with, they have to have a government ID. You know, the fact that it creates a sense of belonging to Madison, you're a card-carrying resident of Madison, and I can speak very well to this next one, which in my short time with motor vehicles, a frustration when I would have an adult child come in and talk about that their 85, nine-year-old parent needed an ID, and the answer I had to give them for motor vehicles, well, you'll have to get them here. And they would say, but they're in a wheelchair, it'd be very difficult. I said, there is no way that we can issue an ID in motor vehicle without them being here. And now, when you look at motor vehicle agencies finally opening up next week, the backlog will be incredible, and it'll be quite a while before that's the best spot to be, as opposed to a quieter environment of Town Hall. And of course, you know, some people reporting crime, sometimes it's requested, not required when you're at a site, and so it'll be helpful. So we'll go on to the next slide, which, again, who? It can be for seniors, as already mentioned by several people. Already mentioned the fact that, you know, all residents age 14 and older would be eligible, so they'd be able to have their ID and, you know, have something with their address on. Very important, this is not required. You know, this is, we're not going out there saying every Madison resident needs a Madison ID. This is an opt-in program, so if you decide you want to have a Madison ID, you can go ahead and get one. If you decide that you want, your driver's license is adequate, that is fine, too. This is, you know, for people that do not have the traditional six points. But it's also for those that want to be proud Madisonians and want to identify with our community. We'll go on to the next slide, which is how it'll be done. We'll be doing it through the clerk's office, right here at Hartley Dodge Memorial. You know, I mentioned, you don't have to have the traditional six points, but you definitely have to have, there'll be a point system that you have to identify who you are, and you have to prove that you are a Madison resident. So it's noted in the ordinance as to those documents. No documents would be retained, and certainly no copies would be made of documents. They would be reviewed by our staff. And then, once they have confirmed their residency and their identification, it would be issued an ID. And our plan is that, you know, to introduce the ordinance tonight, it would have a hearing of, at July 13th, and the program would then launch on August 1st. And things that have been done in other communities that are potential, but not maybe right off the bat, is, you know, the Chamber of Commerce could appoint, you know, honor the identification card for discounts. It certainly could be used for the, right off the bat, confirmation of residency, when you go join the pool or a library and so on. So with that, I'll take questions from the council. Deb?
Just a quick question, and maybe I missed it in our information sheet, and if I did, I apologize. I may have just found it. For minors, if you're 14 and over, what can they use to show residency? Like, if I were to send my 15-year-old down to Borough Hall, he doesn't have anything saying he lives at this address.
So in my motor vehicle days, what was, you know, if you were under 18, so you're a 17-year-old coming in for a permit, it was, you know, bringing your parents' utility bill, something that was appropriate that showed your parents' residency.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Austria, then, John? You're muted, Austria.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any idea how many people access this ID program? I mean, does the whole town kind of go, oh, this is a good idea to have one more piece of identification? Or is it, do we find that it's just a small part of the population that truly have access to no government ID at this point?
Yeah, my, my understanding, and also, as when launched, it's been a portion of the population, so not, not across the board, not, and in fact, the point of, you know, we asked, do we need to ramp up for the kickoff? And the experience in most of the communities is, no, people will just come in as, as needed. So it is not a, you know, you wouldn't see it broadly, probably not broadly used.
And how, how would it be paid for?
There is a fee for each, that they pay for the ID, you know, similar to the cost, and the, the goal is to cover the cost of the program through the ID pricing.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
John, and then Maureen, and Carmella?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'm so glad to see this program being put forth. I've been struggling with it and supporting it for several years now, in the basement and in the living room of Stuart and Ms. Mejia's house, as a matter of fact, a couple of years, few years ago. And so, yes, I've been, I'm a very strong advocate of it. I have a question, though, there was a document in our packet that described all the parameters, costs, and everything else. Is that, where'd that come from? I can't see us developing that. Did it come from Motor Vehicle Commission? And was adapted for, for this purpose?
Yeah, that was the FAQ document, is that what you're referring to?
The big document that describes the whole program.
Yep.
I was curious what the source was.
Yeah, that was borrowed from another municipality. It was not fully adapted yet to reflect what it would be in Madison, but...
Yeah, it's good that we have the, till July 13th, because I'd like to view it.
Yep.
Get some detail.
Yeah, so we would update that and, you know, make sure it reflects on exactly the process in Madison and the usage in Madison.
Okay, and I think it's like $15 to get it, and then $7 for changes, and $15 renewal?
Yep, correct, yep.
Something like that, yeah. No, I think it's a good program, and the quicker we get it done, the better, as I'm concerned, so, yeah, let's do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, it was Maureen, and then Carmela, sorry. It was Maureen and then Carmella.
Thanks, Bob. I just think it's important to reinforce the fact that we're not keeping documentation, that we're requesting documentation, but that we're not keeping documentation, so that people don't worry that it could be used against them at some point further down the line.
Yes, and that was a very key part of the, what communities do is they do have a database, so we know who has the IDs, but there is no, there's no information on there in the database outside of the name and address. So it doesn't say what documents they showed or anything. It is just that they were, they have an ID. There we go.
I want to reiterate what everybody's been actually saying is that, you know, this, this program has been talked about for a couple of years, and it's always been kind of set aside for a while, but here we are. And, you know, hopefully, the council will unanimously vote to introduce this, and then, again, in July, when we have the, the second reading, we'll have an ordinance regarding this. I think one of the important things also is there's an opportunity, when these people come in, to sign up for this ID program, is the clerk will, at that time, ask them if they've completed the census application, and, you know, be able to help them as well. So I think it's going to be a dual purpose, you know. We may have seniors who don't understand that application that came out from census and whatever, and those are the people that are absolutely need to be counted. So, you know, thank you to Liz for agreeing to do this extra job, because I think it's, I think it's an important thing. So I'm pleased to vote yes to introduce it tonight.
Yep, Rachel? I wasn't too sure whether it was a flash of a hand earlier or not, so thank you for putting your hand up again.
No, this was my first hand raise.
Okay, then there was a flash before.
I also want to thank our Borough Clerk, Clerk Liz Osborne, for taking on the administration of this program and for her support of it as an important administrative and municipal service to our residents. I think it goes to show that Madison is focused on its people, that we put people first here, and that we want to make sure that the people that are part of our community can benefit everything that a Madison resident can take advantage of. everything that a Madison resident can take advantage of. But to that end, I want to encourage our businesses and our cultural institutions to think about ways to enrich this program. For instance, New York City has a city-issued ID program that offers people admission to cultural institutions such as museums and civic programs. There are certainly some discounts available in larger cities. And I know we don't necessarily have the depth of those kinds of institutions here, but you did mention the Chamber of Commerce. And I just put out an open invitation to all of our organizations to think about ways to make this ID something that every member, every Madison resident would want to go and get so that we can all take advantage of the, the, the rich institutions and, and for that matter, great shopping that we have here in town. So I hope we can make this a benefit to all Madison residents.
And we can, Lisa Ellis is listening in. So I think we can, you know, put it on our to-do list to put together some facts on the ID program and push it out to the chamber and the businesses and see if we can create a great synergy between the program and, and the businesses, especially as they're trying to get, get back to full steam again.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So again, we have this ordinance up for introduction tonight. As mentioned, the, the hearing will be July 13th. We have an extra week because of five Mondays in June. And the time between the 13th and August 1st will allow us to get our staff fully trained and up and running. Because, again, from my motor vehicle time, I know that, you know, the training of how to look at identification documents is very important. And they, also, we're going to make sure that we preserve confidentiality. So they'll be fully trained on all that. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is racial injustice conversations and town hall process. Deb?
Okay, I'm going to get the discussion started and then open it up to the council. A few Saturdays ago, Reverend Dunn from the First Baptist Church of Madison set up a, again, up a community socially-distanced community conversations with members of his church, the Police Departments of Madison, Chatham Township and Borough, and Florham Park, as well as members of the Madison community. He based this community gathering on the concept of the beloved community, which was a vision of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., in which all people can share in the wealth of the earth. In the beloved community, poverty, hunger, violence and homelessness will not be tolerated because international standards of human decency will not allow it. Racism and all forms of discrimination, bigotry and prejudice will be replaced by an all-inclusive spirit of sisterhood and brotherhood. This started a discussion among many people of how to continue these conversations. Tonight, I am asking the council to commit to having community-wide and inter-community conversations beginning in the middle of July, so that we can learn together about each other, what our community needs and how we can improve. In addition, my hope is that we will have our discussions include members of the police and fire departments, as well as the ambulance corps and borough employees to be a part of the discussion. And hopefully, in the fall, have a joint discussion coordinated with the schools. Continuing these conversations, teaching people how to be actively anti-racist and how we can all do better to be more inclusive. These conversations would be facilitated by various leaders in the Black community, those trained in diversity and inclusion, other experts in anti-racism and racial relations. The goal is not to become colorblind, but to celebrate everyone's diversity, strength and cultures. I open it to the rest of the council for discussion.
Thank you, Deb. And we've been having, as I mentioned earlier about the, my shout-out about the Tri-Town Carers Committee, we've been talking about this as, as much if not more recently than the pandemic response. And Reverend Craig Dunn has been a great resource along with several of the clergy. He is, you know, rolling out a program. There's going to be a conversation tomorrow with the Interfaith Council as to how to roll this program church-based. And I, you know, having conversations with Deb, we want to make sure that this, you know, gets beyond the churches and is community-based. Initially, with Madison, our conversations with the Tri-Town Carers has been not just the Chatham's and Madison, but we've, through the Interfaith Council, would include Florham Park, as we, as I often refer to the original Chatham Township, the four communities together. So I'm, you know, I'm with Deb on the concept that what we need from here, from the council, would be a commitment that the council would support this concept. And we would, you know, working with Tri-Town Carers Group and other support systems of, you know, because to have these discussions, we need to, we need to do it right. And, you know, certainly the theme now is, you know, not being a racist is, is not, that's not the, the end-all. It is fighting racism where it is seen. John?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of meetings ago, we were asked individually to supply a couple of sentences that we could compile together to form a statement from the council. Okay, and that hasn't been produced yet and there's some delay, but I don't know sure why. But in my sense is what I said was, we had a couple of years ago, developed an ordinance for the welcoming community. And the words in the welcoming community ordinance resolution, rather, were very inclusive, very direct, very, very, very comforting and really intelligent words. But the words aren't enough anymore. In this, in this situation, we need to take action. We need to do something. Okay, we absolutely need to do something. And I think this is a great, great start. I think if we start formulating, I would not want it to be just conversation, though. I would want it to be educational. I want it to be action-oriented and to have some things come out of it that we're going to do as a town, as a community. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And what we did, with those comments, we opened up the previous meeting, I think where is where we incorporated that. And I don't know whether we've decided to do another, you know, put it all together in an actual document. But I think that is, you know, something we can look at. Carmella, and then back to Deb.
Thank you, Mayor. Early on, Deb and I had talked about this. I think it's, it's very crucial at this point. I think when people stop talking to each other, they, they create a bias. And there has to be solutions. We can't say, oh, wow, we really, you know, this, this injustice really bothers us. I think we're at a stage now that we have to move solutions. We have many people in this town who are interested in making sure that we, we are not continually in showing racial injustice and whatever. I, I believe a few years back, we had one of those town meetings that, do you remember, Mayor? Was it about affordable housing? And then we broke it down in Hartley Dodge into groups. And people just came and they, like 10 or 15 people just came together in groups. And then we put all of those thoughts together to see how we could explain things to, to people. I think that, you know, that kind of process, again, I thought it was, was very successful. I was involved with one, one group of people and I was enlightened about how people think. I think besides the racial injustice, I'm hoping that something else comes out of here. There's bias in other, other ways as well. And I'm hoping that maybe with conversation, we start seeing what that bias is and how it's playing out in our, in our lives. So I'm hoping that, you know, this, this really works. I'll be around in July, that's for sure. So I'd be happy to help Deb with it or whatever, get this going. Truly believe in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, those discussions were related to when we did the welcoming resolution as Yep, as John pointed out, some great words. And we said that, we had the conversation of how do we put those words into actions?
Right.
Deb?
So just to respond to both of John and Carmella, on the actions front, I totally agree. And one of the things that wanted me to start it as these conversations is Reverend Dunn made the comment to me. He's like, part of the problem is nobody knows their neighbors anymore. Nobody knows anybody's names. So you walk through the streets of Madison when we can, and you might get a smile and a hello, but going up to somebody and saying, hey, Bob, you know, is much better than saying, hey, and having a conversation going, I know I know this person, but I can't come up with this name. So by having people talk to each other and learn about each other and learn their names, hopefully, it will help some of that with that. And as far as how we could do this, there are two different ways right now with COVID. One being using the field on a nice day. Of course, we can't control the weather. And we could socially distance and have small group, big group, and then a smaller group. But if people are uncomfortable with that, we can also do Zooms like this. I have facilitated breakout groups. So people would have to sign up ahead of time ideally. And then if people came in that day, we could add them to groups. But you can set the groups up ahead of time and hit a button. And Zoom will force everybody into a breakout group. And then you can come back as the whole group and have those follow-up discussions. So still lots to figure out how to plan it and how to do it. I will say, if you are interested, if you know of people that can help facilitate or might be interested, drop me an email. Just remember, there's no H in my last name, C-O-E-N-D@rosenet.org.
And John, just waved his hand to help out, help out. But Maureen? You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry. I think we need to be open to, open to other outside organizations that are, that have, that have been forming and are, and are, and are doing education. And it can't just be the Madison municipality. We have to be open to groups like Wind of the Spirits and Black Lives Matter and the students and involve them all in the conversation as well. It just can't be us.
I would agree, that's important. And certainly, we are not alone in trying to generate these conversations. And so we can, you know, learn from the resources we have internally, but also the external resources and examples. Any other comments? So, you know, is it fair to say that the council would commit to providing the support to, to this program so we can go forward and continue these conversations and make us stronger?
Yes, from this guy.
That's for me.
Yep. I, I just wanted to add something, perhaps I should have raised my hand earlier. But I think with something as open-ended and wide-ranging as this could be, you know, are we talking about, talking to our, talking amongst ourselves and getting to know our, our neighbors? Or are we talking about addressing systemic racism? These are like two, you know, important but different topics, right? And so my suggestion would be that perhaps we should support this on a basis wherein we set a check-in date in four months or six months. And we say, how is this going? Do we need to adjust how we're doing this? Do we need to bring in a different level of support than just the grassroots approach? Because my concern is that if we make it too open-ended, we could have, you know, we could sort of fizzle out without having the kind of recommitment to perhaps the resources that we need for this. Or we might find ourselves going in circles without the perspective we need because we, among this group and we in Madison are not experts. So I, I just think there's a way that we could program a check-in into this.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a very good idea of, you know, getting started this summer and then maybe making sure in September, we have a, you know, and then a periodic, periodic check-in starting in September. Austria, and then Deb?
Yeah, yeah, that's my concern is what Rachel just voiced. We, we really need to have a group that can define it and focus it and work with the group that perhaps you're working with, Bob, to make it happen in a very, you know, a way where the result, there are positive results at the end. So it, yes, it doesn't fizzle out. Thank you.
So we can use the, you know, working with the Tri-Town Carers Group will, and which Deb is a part of, again, that, to put that together, maybe even a, maybe not the July 13th meeting, but the July 27th meeting even, you know, if we haven't had the first session at that point, at least announcing what it is. And so it could be a regular reporting of the, at council meetings.
And just real quick, Rachel, I totally agree. It can go either way. The goal right now is to start small and kind of get to know our community. But working with Wind of the Spirit, like Maureen said, Black Lives Matters, all the other groups that are kind of out there, even the students that led the protest who ran it so well. I have some resources from trainings that I've had in my district that have started over the summer and will continue. But that's why I'm saying, if anybody knows of experts or knows of people, I'm happy to reach out and be connected to them so that we can do this. Because I'm a firm believer, if we're going to do something like this, we need to do it right and have it be effective. Otherwise, it's just going back to talk and no action. So I appreciate the support and I will definitely keep everybody posted.
All right, thank you. John?
Just one last thought, if I can. One of the things I think that would help is if we get a professional facilitator, somebody who's trained in facilitation, who has done this before, who teaches it. We used one at the Rotary Club for high school mentoring a few years ago. And the guy is just terrific. He really is. So I would suggest we can sit down and talk about it so that a couple of us, Deb and whoever else, can sit down with this guy and explain what we want to do. You know, and he can formulate a plan of how to do the facilitation. And we actually make it a facilitated event.
I think that's, that's a good point. And also Pastor Craig Dunn has suggested someone that he's aware of. But I think, again, we need to do this right. So. All right, so we have a full commitment from the council. And so we'll move on to our next item, which is online billing system.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this as Councilwoman Vitale, Council President Vitale said, we're really doing this to promote the new system that we have. It's an online bill pay program. My goal is to talk for less than five minutes, present less than five minutes. I think Ray played a practical joke on me. It's 80 degrees in my office right now. Move things along. Anyway, everyone should be receiving in their utility bill, a flyer that encourages them to join, join up for Invoice Cloud. It's an online payment platform and one that's worth considering. It has automatic bill pay, paperless billing, recurring, the ability to schedule recurring payments and the ability to do one-time payment option, even pay by text, you can pay by check. Or as Councilwoman, Council President Vitale says, you can pay by credit card, but there is a fee. I wanted to quickly share my screen with you, let's see, and show you a little bit of the back end of the system that we're using called Invoice Cloud. It's real interesting in that we get a lot of this reportable information. And I wanted to show you this really quick. This shows the last 10 days of transactions. EFT is the Electronic Funds Transfer Check and Credit Card Payments. You can see we've taken in just in this month, already $108,000 in transactions. That's tremendous. Paperless, almost 10% of the entire customer base has already signed up for paperless bills, which is wonderful. I think the Environmental Commission and others would be happy to see that. Payment type is credit card or electronic funds transfer. And that is, is obviously a breakdown of the different ways payments are coming in. Whether the customer is a registered customer or not, we now have over 20% of the customers that have registered. We still have 79.25% unregistered, but it's been up for just about a month. So we're obviously encouraging residents to, to join the system because it really makes the back office a lot easier. This system here happens to show whether we're getting online bank direct payment and automatic payment, a one-time payment through the customer portal or through the shopping cart or a customer portal payment, which means they've registered. So very likely what's happening is the first time people are going online, making a payment and then saying, hey, that was, that was cool. Let me, let me sign up for the system. So, so that's it in, in a nutshell. I'll answer any questions you have. But the main thing is to try to encourage everyone to stand up for this great system.
I just want to make a comment.
Mayor, you're muted.
Yep, Carmella, go ahead.
Debbie, I think she had her hand up.
It's all right, you can go first.
I just
I've got to get my video back again, sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. When, when this first started, I guess, what was it, about three weeks ago, Jim and I had a conversation about it. And I was on the phone with him and I said, okay, let's, let's see how this works. And I'm going to register. Registered very easily and whatever. And this month, I got my, my first bill that was automatically paid through my checking account. And then I got an email that says, your electric bill has just been paid. I love it. It's wonderful. I'm hoping that, you know, it's one less thing to worry about. And, and guess what? Madison gets paid in a timely manner too, which was, was kind of awesome. So it was very easy. I do it a lot now with a lot of my bills. And I'm just absolutely pleased that we've gone this route. I also signed up for paperless summary because there's no use getting a paper if I'm going to be paying electronically like that too. So, good job, Jim.
Thank you. Who else had their hand up? Now that I can see everyone, Deb?
Just a one question, and I fully support this. Jim knows I've been trying to get this done for quite some time. But I do know we use those electric bill utility payments to put flyers in about various things. And we just need to remember, we now need to find another way to reach everybody. The more everybody goes paperless. I know we've gotten friends at the library, we get the pool stuff. There's various flyers that go in there. The school sometimes puts stuff in there. So just something for the back of the mind is we need to come up with a non electronic or a way to reach those that are not necessarily always electronic to get that information. But again, it was easy to register. I haven't got my second bill yet. I've only gotten the first one and paid that, but it was super easy. Thanks.
I think Jim has, is going to get his pilot's license and is going to start flying banners around town to help.
Whatever you need me to do, Mayor, I'm happy to do it.
That's, yep, that. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Jim, for that presentation and you.
Under six minutes.
Yep, you did well. So we now move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed at first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Wednesday, May the 27th and Monday, June the 8th, 2020. I just have my lighting here. All were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call ordinance for a second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 16-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $9,581 from the municipal open space trust fund as matching funds for replacement of the Luke Miller house fence.
I open the hearing and anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please hit the, raise your hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. And again, if you are recognized, state your name and address first and keep your, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 16-2020.
A second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 16-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 17-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $10,000 from the municipal open space trust fund as matching funds for a feasibility study and construction documents at the Museum of Early Trades and Craft.
I open the hearing for ordinance 17, under the same guidelines as before. Please click, raise your hand or star nine if you wish to comment on this ordinance. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 17-2020.
A second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 17-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper and file the ordinance, the ordinance in accordance with the law. And ordinance 18-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $90,000 from the electric utility capital improvement fund for the purchase of LED streetlights.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand by clicking on it or star nine if you're on the phone. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 18-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 17-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now we're on to our second of two invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, same rules are in effect. If you're going to raise your hand by clicking on it or star nine if you're on the phone, once you're recognized, first things we must state are your name and address and try to keep your comments to three minutes. But I will ask you to stop at four. Anyone wish to comment, please raise hand now. Seeing none, I close this portion of the meeting and we move on to introduction ordinance. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for July 13th, 2020. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 19-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to update the water connection fee schedule. Mayor, I move ordinance 19-2020.
Second.
Council discussion. This is an annual action that keeps our, our fees up to date based on capital investment. So if someone, new development adds into our system, they pay, help pay for the systems that were already put in place. Roll call vote, please.
This is Vitale.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-20-20-20.
For the Borough of Madison in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, creating the Borough of Madison Identification Card Program.
Mayor, I move ordinance 20-2020.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move resolutions 168-2020 to resolution 185-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be polled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
I'll abstain on R 169 and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Let's move on to approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the statement or the voucher registry? I got distracted a second.
Okay, for the current fund, we have $4,346,880.62. General capital fund, $54,449.52. Electric operating fund, $209,784.33. For the water operating fund, $7,801.99. For the water capital fund, $136,520. And for the trust, $1,978.11. The total is $4,757,414.57.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, just under new business, I just wanted, for those that are listening in, we are not too sure what the future brings with coming back all together inside in one room, holding a meeting. But we, as we're now into the summer where people may be all over the place, we will certainly continue this method, no matter what the state regulations are, unless we're told we can't do it through July and August. I have asked Council President Carmella Vitale, who's also the liaison to clerk's office and Deb Cohen, who is, was helpful in working with Michael and the Board of Education and helping us get here that we'll start working on what our post COVID-19 meetings will look like because we, we know we're, we're not going back to Kansas anymore, you know, tapping our heels together. We're going to go back to a different world. So there'll be more to come on that. So I thank them for stepping forward on that. And any council members, you know, we will be obviously having many conversations about how we'll be conducting meetings going into the future. With that, Rachel?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all.
Thank you.